I think he's best friends with the developer.
Okay, we got 5:30, so I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. At this time, call upon Commissioner Valerosa to lead us in the indication.
Mayor, I've invited my pastor, Danny Anderson. I'm about to start to invoke the prayer for this meeting today.
Thank you, Brother Ruben. Father in heaven, what an honor it is to serve you. And Lord, what an honor it is to be able to invoke your presence into this meeting tonight. Father, I pray that you would guide and direct, grant wisdom to those who are making decisions tonight. Lord, may it be for the betterment of our communities, of our families, Lord, for the establishment as a whole. Father, I just ask you, God, to guide and to direct. And Lord, as we look into this Christmas season, we understand that there are a lot of individuals in our communities that are lacking, that are in great need. And Father, I pray that at this time, the churches, the city, others, Lord, would be of utmost help in reaching out and impacting these lives in a very special way. Father, I just ask for your presence. I ask for your power. I ask for your anointing upon everything that takes place here. We pray in Jesus' name, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Just join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. Glad everyone is here. And on behalf of the City Commission, Merry Christmas. Hope you all have a great holiday next week. At this time, we'll go to item one, which is the approval of the special meeting minutes of December 10, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If there are not, it's a motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next items are the consent agenda items 2A through D. Is there a motion to adopt the consent?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item three, consideration of motion and possible action to reconsider the adoption of the Harlingen Convention Center brand logo.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. We are coming before you to look at the logo that had been approved or considered by the City Commission back in October. The last discussion we had, we looked at the location of the sign, but at the same time, the comment about the logo itself came back to us, and we'd been asked to bring it back to you all for consideration. And we have the developer here present. He did provide another rendition of the name of the facility, again, on the top tier of the building, with the logo that had been considered in the past. We do want to share that, and I'd like to turn it over to Clyde Johnson, who is with the developer, to maybe address the City Commission.
I'm sorry, Clyde. We're going to move that to the -- it's not going to be up there, is it?
No. I think we all agree that it was going to be on the up front beam, and I think Clyde wants to address that as well. But before Clyde starts his presentation, I asked Carlos to put this back on. I got some comments about the logo itself. Our logo, right behind us here, is pretty recognizable with Harlingen. People know it. People are familiar with it. So I asked him to put it back on, so we can reconsider whether to continue with the logo that was presented to us, or utilize our logo that we have for the City of Harlingen. Our logo that shows up on our business cars, our stationery, on everything that we do. So I asked him to put it back on. That's why it's back on the agenda. And Clyde is going to convince us why we need to stick with their logo, with the logo that was adopted. I still feel that our logo is a pretty nice logo, and that's pretty recognizable, and that's just me. So this is all my fault. I'm the one that asked Carlos to put it on. So with that, Clyde, it's all yours.
Thank you all very much for allowing me the opportunity to come back and visit with you guys today. You know, I think the comments that you made is that y'all's logo is recognizable, and it's identifiable with the City of Harlingen, whereas I think that's an absolute wonderful thing. I also look at the way that where I'm from, which is San Antonio, Texas, that has probably arguably one of the best convention centers in the Texas market, or that of the United States, and kind of the way that they look at handling their branding and marketing, and kind of use that as a case study. And it's, for those of you that don't know, it's a Henry V. Gonzalez Convention Center. And their branding, and their logo, and their fonts and everything aren't the same as the city. And there's a reason for that. You know, there's a certain stigma, whether good or bad, to being operated. If you're having a function, a wedding, you can see at a city-operated establishment or a private-operated establishment, and kind of the price levels and opportunity you have with that. It's not to say that anything that's done by a city is not done well, but there's just in brides' minds and ladies' minds that are planning events, it's just different. I mean, y'all asked us, as the developer, you entrusted us as the guys to help build this project, and to get it off the ground, and then as well operate it and sell it, most importantly, sell it. And so, in my experience in operating our hotels that we have over the years, that we currently operate, understanding the event business, whether that be for corporate events or whether that be for social events, and entrusted us to do what we think is right. And I wouldn't be, you know, bringing this back up if I didn't think that there was a discussion to be had. What we were asked to do also was to go out and find a group that would help us brand and make this place special and unique. And I found what I thought to believe is a great in Alexander Hillme, a guy who is from the valley, understands it from Harlingen, his father still lives here as a doctor. And we went through several iterations on what this should look like. And it's not just a logo, and it's not just a font, and it's not just a color. It's the combination of all together. I mean, it's what makes Apple, Apple, what makes Microsoft, Microsoft. I mean, you recognize those. You recognize them for certain reasons. You know, when you walk into an Apple store, what you're going to get, what you're going to find. And what I think I'm asking you today is too full to consider making this place a unique, branded place that we can sell and market. And what we also tried to do, let me back up for a second, is we tried to take this logo and marry it with y'all's logo and y'all's city, with the bridge, and there's, you know, lots of identifications with the H. And so I don't think it's so far off the map that it's totally different than what y'all have in places your city. I think people still recognize it as a city event, you know, that it's going to be owned by the city, but I guess what I'm here today is to ask for your reconsideration of that logo, because I firmly believe that for us to go sell and market the place which y'all are entrusting us to do to make money, we feel like it's a necessary discussion.
And as I mentioned, this is my idea to put it back on. I respect the wisdom of the Commission, and if the decision is to move forward with the logo that is there, that's what we will do. But I wanted to put it out one more time, just like we did the brick. We have plenty of practice with the brick, right? So let's just do this again.
I do have a comment. If we go to our Harlingen website, or our city website, our logo is not on there. If we go to the Harlingen CVB, they have a distinct logo that has nothing to do with our logo. And I kind of agree that the Convention Center is a special circumstance, where maybe we do need something to identify uniquely. When somebody sees that logo, they know that's the Convention Center in Harlingen rather than an administrative building. Just my thoughts.
I thought in the last meeting, I said, to me, when I first looked at it, it looks like the Under Armour logo. And that's not an Under Armour, or what they try to do. It's just, to the regular person, you got a nine-toned thing, and say, no, it looks like Under Armour. A little different, but that's what I looked at. I don't mind it being a separate logo, but it should be distinct from anything else that is not recognizable for something else.
There's not enough difference for me between the two logos to want to infringe on what the developer and the manager of the Convention Center thinks is best. We've got, we're showing the logo back up there. Is this also talking about putting the logo back up on that fascia up there, or?
Yes, sir. What I'd like, that'd be the second thing that I'd ask for y'all's consideration. When we did propose it originally, we were going to see if we could put it up on the parapet, because our goal was to make this place as visible as possible and marketed, almost like a billboard. And so we were trying to get it put on top of the parapet, but we had to go discover whether that was even viable. Our marketing folks brought that to us, you know, the two or three days before we presented it to you. And so we thought, you know, let's go see if we can do it. And then that's how the whole thing got brought back on the agenda, because we couldn't get it up on top of the roof, and that's what I think the group liked best. And so it was also then asked to be put down on the portico chair down lower. And my argument here is, in this case, is that you can't, you will not be able to see it from, unless you're standing right in front, in the drive, in front of the Harlingen Convention Center. I took pictures today that I believe are on the screen that I could show. From any entrance, or any time you turn off of the highway or come around, it's very difficult to see, just because of the sheer size and the location of it being on the lower part of the portico chair. I understand it makes for probably some good photo opportunities, but I would say that more of the goal is to be, people to be able to see it from the highway, make it very recognizable, and be able to identify the building when they are driving down the highway or wandering in to come to the Convention Center.
Sir, do you have an idea what that would cost to put it up there as opposed to the bottom?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Is it a significant price difference, huh?
Yes, sir. I believe the difference, I'm not going to get it exactly.
Just about, I mean, yeah.
Massimo Mendels, $20,000.
And when you showed it to us the last time, was the font different than this?
No, sir.
For the, I know we didn't have the logo up there. It just said, "Like Harlingen Convention Center."
It was this font. The goal of Alexander Hillme's discussion is, is that the font, as well in conjunction with the logo, I think maybe on, maybe it can go up a page, or down a page. Fill up. No, that's all right. Well, you can go to that one. Okay, so this is an example of one of the signs that they're proposing for the poll on, but you can see how the Harlingen Convention Center can move around with the logo.
Right.
Meaning that, you know, you don't just have it below.
You can stack it.
Or to the side, you can stack it. And in their experience, Hillme's experience, the clean font kind of gives it a very modern and recognizable, recognizable look. Because you can't, that font right there, if you try to go on your Outlook, or not my Outlook, but.
Word.
Word, you can't find it. It's a distinct font. So it's special and unique to Harlingen. You may not.
Well, for some reason, I don't find, what we looked at last time, I don't think had a logo on it. It just had the words up there, and I could swear they were like a different color or something, whatever.
It was a different font.
Your, sir, you're correct on putting it on the parapet.
Yeah.
It did not have the logo on there. It was just the words by itself.
I don't really have any problem with it. I mean.
Maybe go down if you don't mind. Was there another? Okay, so this is the example of where, you know, the other option, the other option is.
From the Department of Redundancy?
Yes, sir.
Could we keep, put the logo and keep the Harlingen Convention Center there as people drive up, and keep it also on the big, on the top, on big? And that way, people can see it from the road, and as they approach, it's there again?
We, I think we absolutely.
I'm guessing McDonald's and other corporations have more than one sign and logo on their building and at their property.
Hundred percent. And I believe you'd be correct. I think from a budgetary standpoint.
Right.
It would probably blow the budget, but I, meaning that we would be over. But I'm sure we could certainly have that discussion and look to see how, at the end of the project, how we could fit it in. I will tell you that the provisions that we're going to try to take from a standpoint of electricity is to be able to have at our disposal both options. So meaning that we could do one, come back later in a year and do another, or, you know, we could talk about budgetary standpoint.
Well, I think it's important to make sure we have that option with the, we talked about that last time, to make sure we had the electrical there. And I think I mentioned something about some duplex plugs in the top of that thing or something to, if you're going to ever decorate it for Christmas, you're going to need power, so.
Good thought there. The other thing that I might mention to you is that, you know, which is not a budget item blow or anything, but, you know, having Harlingen Convention Center worded on the storefronts of the doors as you enter, so that it is there in multiple places.
All right, well, what do we want to do? I think, so there was a meeting, we had one meeting where we, I had to leave early. I don't think I was part of the discussion of the logo, but I think you all approved this, that logo. And then after that, I think there must, I think there was some conversation about.
Moving the lettering down to the.
Concerned about, concerned about, and then we had, and then we had another meeting where, for various reasons, we didn't think that it made sense to put the signage at that, on that location, and we wanted to move it down. Clyde has come here tonight basically saying he thinks that we ought to keep the logo, and that we ought to put the signage up there, and I think that's, so that's the issue for tonight.
Fine with that.
Are we allowed to make that motion, because the agenda calls just for.
Yeah, I'd make, well, I would make, yeah, I would make the motion to be, make it clear what we want, what we want to do.
My motion would be to keep the logo that we adopted at our previous meeting, and to move the Harlingen Convention Center signage back up to the parapet. Is that what they call that part?
On the face of the parapet.
On the face, please.
Okay.
That's what you asked.
Face of the parapet, yes, sir.
On the face of the parapet.
I'd second the motion.
All right. Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
We have one day.
One nay. Motion carries. All right. Well, we appreciate you coming to visit with us about this issue. Apparently, it was something you felt strongly enough about, that you felt that it was important for the success of the project to have the signage up there, so we appreciate you bringing that and pointing it out to us.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all for entrusting us with the duty of running your operation and.
Sir, can I ask you, are we on budget right now?
Currently, yes. We could go, we can probably find some conventions later on for the extra signage, but let's get the project.
No, I'm talking about the whole project, not so much the signage. You know, are we on budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Not on schedule, but on budget. It hurts when you rain 60 days out of someplace that's only supposed to rain 10 days.
All right.
Thank you all.
Anything else? All right. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number four.
You get to read it, right?
Well, she's got to read it again. She's got to read it again. We need to read it, we need to read it twice.
We can't say ditto?
All right. Public hearing to consider on ordinance, the first reading of rezoning from not designated end district residential mobile home, MH District to 3.82 plus or minus acres, plus or minus acres, out of lots, block 147, Sandy Land and Water Company subdivision, rezoned from not designated end district to residential multifamily, M2 District for 19.83 acres out of block 66, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, 6.5 acres out of lot 10, five acres out of lot 11, 4.7 acres out of lot 14, 9.39 acres out of lot 15, block 147, Sandy Land and Water Company subdivision, rezoned from light industry allied district residential multifamily, M2 District for 7.55 acres out of block 119, Sandy Land and Water Company subdivision, rezoned from not designated end district, general retail GR District for 4.12 acres out of block 27, and 4.32 acres out of block 28, Bricks Coleman subdivision, survey 49, lot 1, block 1, Coastal Bend subdivision, 7.52 plus or minus acres out of block 57, 6.03 acres out of block 68, 34.99 acres out of block 90, 19.08 acres out of block 91, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, 30.73 acres out of block 49, Politec Company subdivision, lots 1 through 4, Rio subdivision, part of lot 4, block 1, Cameron County Juvenile Detention Center subdivision, 4.35 acres out of lot 1 and 2, 4.95 acres out of lot 2, 4.0 acres out of lot 7, and 3.5 acres out of lot 10, block 147, 7.91 acres out of block 179, Sandy Land and Water Company subdivision, and rezoned from not designated end district, light industry allied district for 3.08 acres out of block 91, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, all properties generally located along Loop 499, east of 7th Street and north of 77 Sunshine Strip between Camelot Drive and FM 509, applicant City of Harlingen.
Thank you.
Rodrigo. Thank you for giving me that legal description to read.
This is a city-initiated rezoning. The surrounding properties for the area along the north side of Loop 499 are proposed for general retail districts, are sold non-designated to the south, and general retail to the east and to the west. North of the subject property is outside the city limits, and for the properties along Vincent Avenue. They're also proposed for multifamily. The surrounding properties are shown general retail district to the north, single family to the south, and non-designated to the east and the west. For the properties along the Rio on the Road and Loop 499, they are proposed for general retail and light industry. The surrounding properties are shown planned development, light industry, to the north, general retail and light industry, to the south, light industry, to the east, and general retail to the west. Pretty much making big plans. For the property along Loop 499, north of Washington Avenue, proposed for general retail. The surrounding sonings are light industry to the northeast, and general retail to the south and west. The surrounding, the surrounding sonings for the property proposed for residential multifamily on Washington Avenue are residential, single family, multifamily, district to the north, multifamily to the south, and general retail to the east, and residential single family to the west.
Make up the wrong picture.
Properties along East Harrison Avenue, proposed for general retail, are general retail to the north, non-designated, and general retail to the south.
I think we're off on our pictures.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry.
There you go. Advance, yeah. Okay. I apologize for that. Is that one right? Is that Harrison?
Loop 499?
This one.
There you go, Harrison.
To the east and general retail to the west. For the property along Tennessee Avenue, proposed for general retail district, the surrounding sonings are residential to the north, general retail to the south and east, and office, general retail to the west.
That's not that picture.
General office to the west. I apologize for that.
That's it.
So the surrounding zoning properties for Wayland Road are proposed for residential multifamily, are residential multifamily, district to the north, non-designated to the east.
On this map, what is that? There are no streets. Where is this?
Wayland.
Wayland, sir.
Which one's Wayland?
Wayland is, would be this one. That'd be the road that.
Right, right, right. Okay. Just making sure.
South of the properties inside the San Benito city limits. For the property proposed for mobile home on Kilgore Avenue, the surrounding zoning are general retail to the north, and non-designated to the south, east, and the west. Properties on Kilgore Avenue proposed for general retail, the surrounding sonings are general retail district to the north, and non-designated to the west, south and east of the properties of the San Benito city limits.
And when you're picking these up from mobile home to general retail, that's because that's what's existing on the property.
That's generally existing.
You'll have general retail, and you'll have mobile home right next to it. It's already that way.
And on the future land use map, it's also seen as low density, so we allow it. The surrounding zoning for the property is proposed for general retail. On Hayne Drive are general retail to the north, east and west, and office to the south. So this is, this is what we have on our zoning map, and this is the future land use map. To give an idea, they will pretty much be inconsistent with what's proposed. The surrounding land uses are generally consistent with the proposed zoning areas. PNC and staff recommend.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The very last words are generally located, mentions the Loop 7th Street between Camelot Drive and 509. There's nothing on Camelot, though. You're just including the boundaries of the city.
That's correct.
For this.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's only the tracks of proposed. The map is just the area map.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll shoot for an approval.
Well, let me go, I got to go to public hearing. An open public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the rezoning?
I guess it's spot zoning. Where can they get it? It's spot zoning.
You're on the shop at 258 Alta Spalmas. I don't live out there, but I have friends that do. And I would say anybody here opposing to it, did they get advised in English and Spanish? Because that's a lot of rezoning. As long as it's not, it's not spot zoning, I guess it's okay for the betterment of the community, but if it's for the betterment of certain interests of people that have certain interests out there, then that's not a good thing. I oppose to it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing. Ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Your turn.
Take a deep breath before you start.
No doubt, right? Public hearing. Oh, sorry. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen rezoning from not designated end district to residential single family R1 District for 3.12 acres out of block 103, 2.94 acres out of block 118, and 8.79 acres out of block 119. Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, half acres out of block 20. Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, half acres out of block twenty three Briggs and Coleman subdivision, survey forty nine, and lot one, block one Galvez subdivision, rezoned from not designated district to residential multifamily M two district for three point seven nine acres out of block sixty two David and Stevenson subdivision, and thirteen point nine eight acres out of block one nineteen Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, rezoned from not designated end district to general retail GR district for ten point eight acres out of block twenty three, six point two one acres out of block twenty four, three point seven three acres out of block twenty five, three point three acres out of block twenty six, three point three five acres out of blocks twenty six and twenty seven, eight point one two acres out of block twenty seven, and four point three acres out of block twenty eight Briggs and Coleman subdivision, survey forty nine, thirteen point eleven acres out of block fifty eight, and six point six seven acres out of block fifty nine David and Stevenson subdivision, and twelve point nine one acres out of block one twenty one Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, and rezoned from not designated end district to light industry district LI for nine point eight three acres out of block nineteen Cunningham subdivision, all properties generally located between Expressway Seventy Seven and Twenty Fifth Street, north of Phoenix Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Mayor, I'm right along, it doesn't match what I have.
Right. There's something, there's something that's not matching up.
It doesn't match up, that's a different ordinance. We're on item four, correct? Item four?
Did I read the wrong one?
Yes.
Oh, God, really?
Just getting warmed up. You had to do it again.
I did, really.
He knew that by the, like, the second sentence, by the way, he just wanted you to go.
The very last line will be Camelot Drive and five oh nine.
Oh, my God.
Well, stop her sooner, guys.
Well, I mean, I was trying, I was trying to find her.
Did you, may I, there was another, under the, did you read the one under the consent agenda? That was a lengthy rezonation as well, item two C.
What number is it?
Did you read two C?
I went to the one that.
That was four.
Number four.
It was tabbed.
Well, I'm in number four. This, this doesn't match.
This is the one you put, we're in number four, it's two C, we're here.
All right.
Ends with.
Yeah, this is what.
Rodrigo, was it one, is it the one that says ordinance number eighteen?
Seventy seventh and twenty fifth?
I read this.
Nope, nope, that's not it.
Wow.
Four ninety nine, no. Camelot and the five oh nine.
Last one.
All right.
Here, hand her, hand her the, here it is.
Well.
Yeah, okay, there's two ordinance number eighteens in here. It's this big one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, that's not what I have.
Well, I know, but, I know, but, here, this is it, this is it.
She's, she's got it.
But there's, there's another one that's, doesn't have the same description.
It's because they put eight for the year, and they didn't put the actual ordinance number.
It's in there.
Is this it?
That was it.
Is this it?
It's the one that kicks up the full page.
Oh.
It ends with five oh nine.
And Camelot Drive.
Camelot Drive.
Okay. Do you want me to read this into the record?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Sorry. I'll read fast. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen rezoning from not designated end district to residential mobile home district for three point eight two plus acres out of lot seven, block one forty seven, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, rezoned from not designated end district to residential multifamily M two district for nineteen point eight three acres out of block sixty six Harlins Land and Water Company subdivision, six point five acres out of lot ten, five acres out of lot eleven, four point seven acres out of lot fourteen, nine point three nine acres out of lot fifteen, block one forty seven San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision rezoned light industry LI district to residential multifamily M two district for seven point five five acres out of block one nineteen San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision rezoned from not designated end district to general retail district for four point one two acres out of block twenty seven and four point three two acres out of block twenty eight Briggs Coleman subdivision, survey forty nine lot one, block one Coastal Bend subdivision, seven point five two acres out of block fifty seven, six point oh three acres out of block sixty eight, three point, thirty four point ninety nine acres out of block ninety, nineteen point zero eight acres out of block ninety one Harlins Land and Water Company subdivision, thirty point seventy three acres out of block forty nine Palmetto Company subdivision, lots one through four Rio subdivision part of lot four, block one Cameron County Juvenile Detention Center subdivision, point, four point three five acres out of lots one and two, four point nine five acres out of lot two, four acres out of lot seven, and three point five acres out of lot ten, block one forty seven, and seven point nine one acres out of block one seventy nine San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, and rezoned from not designated end district to light industry LI district for three point oh eight acres out of block ninety one Harlins Land and Water Company subdivision, all properties generally located along Loop east of Seventh Street and north of Seventy Seventh Sunshine Strip between Camelot Drive and FM five oh nine, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. The opposed, like sign, motion carries, item five, consideration of possible action to grant a variance request in regards to the minimum lot depth for the proposed Mancha subdivision bearing a legal description of zero point two five six acre tract of land more or less out of block sixty four, non-seeable subdivision located on the west side of Hacienda Road, north of Morse Road, the applicant is Victor Bonuelos of Centerline Surveying.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property is currently located, is currently undeveloped, it is located inside the city limits, on the west side of Hacienda Road, north of Morse Road. The subdivision has a proposed dimensions of a hundred and twenty four feet in width and ninety feet in depth. It meets the minimum requirement square footage for a lot width, but does not meet the minimum depth requirement, depth requirement of a hundred feet. And so the, the developer is requesting a variance for the quarter ordinance section one oh nine, one twenty four B in regards to the minimum lot depth of a hundred feet. PNC and staff recommend approval.
And they want to turn this into, this piece of property into what?
They, they want to just be able to build a home.
On a quarter of an acre?
It's, it's a.
It's a, it's a good size. They just, for some reason, they're off. I guess this is the guy that's the last guy to subdivide or something, and he doesn't, he's missing ten feet.
Right.
Which is not a big deal. He has a, he has the area, but he's just ten feet short of the hundred.
Of the hundred that we require, and there is, since all the area around them is developed, there is no.
And are those lots the same size? Those, those look like big lots.
These ones are, these two, they're the same size, yes, sir.
Right, and did they cut that one into two? Is that how that happened?
That's how that happened, yes, sir.
And we let them do that?
Who has the one below, I mean, is it currently owned by somebody, or?
It is.
The one behind? Or is he the same owner?
It is owned by Margarita Diaz.
And when did, do you know when we let them do that?
No, sir, I do not have the data of that, what they want to cut.
Margarita owns both pieces of property, or just the one that's, that's being brought for us?
Apparently she owns both.
She owns both?
Right. But there is a.
Well, they're, they're already.
Oh, there's an existing structure. Right, and we want to cut it to the back, and then there's another structure surrounding it, the rest of it is the street, so there's no work for them to get the additional ten feet.
So there's a, she owns a home on the other property.
So does her lot, right now, the one where that house is, puts the dimensions on it back on your plat?
This one here?
Yeah.
It's the same, so ninety, ninety, uh, five one twenty four.
No, but what size is the home?
Well, no, no, I'm just, it's, it's, so it's only a hundred and eighty Mac total, so they just divided that in half.
Probably. And they're not asking for, to subdivide, they're just asking for the variance on the lot length, it's already subdivided.
Right. But, so we let them subdivide it at ninety?
At, at one point, yes, sir, that's.
Right.
Okay, well, is there anybody who has, has any other questions about the variance? Is there a motion to grant the variance?
I so moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Yelhorn, second by Commissioner Leal.
Okay.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. The opposed, like sign, motion carries, item six, public hearing received comments regarding the proposed voluntary annexation and to establish the initial zoning to general retail GR district for a one point zero plus or minus acres of land being the north fifty feet of a two point seven six six acre tract of land out of block fifty four David and Stevenson subdivision located on the west side of Briggs Coleman Road, north of Loop four ninety nine, applicant's John W. Drennan care of Troy Investment Company, number seven LP.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Texas Local Government Code and the City Court of Ordinances, three public hearings are required as related to the voluntary annexation request. One public hearing is required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and two public hearings are required for the city commission. This one represents the second of two public hearings required before the city commission.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is anyone who'd like to speak for or against the proposed voluntary annexation? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the proposed voluntary annexation? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing, and I have been asked to pass items seven and nine for additional information regarding the sidewalk ordinance, unless there's any objection from the staff or a commission. Okay, all right, they're being done, we'll pass items seven and nine, we'll go to item eight, which is consideration of possible action to grant a variance with regards to the streetlight requirement for proposed storage depot subdivision bearing a legal description of a three point seven four three acre tract of land more or less being all of lot two, block one replant of lots one, two, and four Stone subdivision phase two, and a two point seven six six acre tract out of block fifty four David and Stevenson subdivision located on the north side of Loop four ninety nine, west of Briggs Coleman Road, applicant Jack Brown, Brownlee Allen Associates, here at Troy Investment Company, number seven. Rodrigo?
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property is located inside the city limits and has a proposed frontage of two hundred feet on Loop four ninety nine, has a proposed frontage of a hundred and thirty seven point nine feet on Briggs Coleman Road. There are existing streetlights at the intersection of Loop four ninety nine, in Stone Creek Drive and the intersection of Loop four ninety nine and Briggs Coleman Road. The block from Stone Creek Drive and Briggs Coleman is a, is around sixteen hundred feet, and the mid-block would be around eight hundred feet. The mid-block falls within the proposed subdivision. So the, the variance request was reviewed by the Traffic Signals Maintenance Department, who reported objection to the variance request. There is minimal street lighting, according to their, to their objection, there's minimal street lightings along Loop four ninety nine, and the installation of a new streetlight for a new subdivision will make it safer for pedestrians and motorists. Staff and PNC recommend this approval of this variance.
Did you say disapproval?
Right, they're asking for us to approve, for them not to put it.
And, and so the streetlight would go right in the middle?
Yes.
Well, somewhere in there, it doesn't have to go right in the middle.
Correct.
Okay, so it could be off to one side or another.
More than likely. The, the property is subject to be subdivided and developed, so depending how the development goes, they replace it all there. But it would be a longer two hundred.
Because what I understood the last time they heard, they're only going to build on the left side, they're just not going to do anything in the back right now, right?
It's going to be facedown.
That's their entrance, though.
Correct.
And PNC did say no.
Yes.
I'm motion to deny, or to disapprove.
Is that the way the motion should be?
I think that's how we get it.
Right. Second.
Okay, the motion is to deny the variance.
Do we know what that, what the light costs to put in, what the expense is? Is it like a regular streetlight that has to be to our specifications, or it is just a security light?
No, it's a streetlight, and so it has to meet our specs. The cost varies depending on the location of the transmission lines, so if there's a transmission line goes by, it would be substantially less.
And they ask us not to consider cost as a basis for writing or denying?
Right.
Is, is it safe?
Right. Okay, we have, we have a motion to deny the variance, is there any, how many votes do we need to deny?
Simple majority is fine, it's just in the case to overrule a positive recommendation of the PNCs where you need a, a super majority.
All those in favor to deny the variance and streetlight, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Item ten, consideration of possible action to amend the industrial district agreement between the city of Harlingen and Cardo Industries approved on November twenty sixth, twenty eighteen, okay?
Mayor, we're asking that the city commission approve a revised, an amended IDA that was approved on November twenty sixth, twenty eighteen. The original agreement contained language that has been removed by both parties. It addresses specifically item number three in your executive summary that talks about company will pay a hundred percent of the fair market value of the property. City staff and the attorney recommend approval.
We said they needed to clarify the language, so it'd be intensive thing.
All right, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to authorize the Harlins Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Valley AIDS Council to provide Narcan training to selected members of the HPD training staff.
Good evening, this item is again to provide a training for our training staff on the use of Narcan at nasal spray taken in opiate overdoses, which have become pretty common here in the past couple years. This is to allow us to enter into an MOU with a Valley Council.
How many officers would you train? As opposed to all of them?
The Valley AIDS Council would train our training division, and they in turn would train the rest of the officers, the entire, the entire department would be trained on the use of the nasal spray.
And would they have the Narcan with them, all the units would have the Narcan with them?
We have received enough Narcan from the Valley AIDS Council to provide a dose to every officer on patrol.
Great, wow.
That's what I was going to ask.
Actually, giving, giving someone Narcan is actually fun. It, it works amazing.
I'm motion for an approval.
Okay, we have a motion to.
Second.
Prove, second. Commissioner Nola Rosso, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, thank you. Item twelve, board appointments.
I have none. Mayor, I want to appoint Pete Garza, Jr., to the construction board and adjustments of appeal, and also I want to nominate Linda Burt to the economic development board.
All right, is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, it's executive close session on the following items. A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five fifty two point oh seven two and five fifty one point oh seven one deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of deliberation opened meeting would have detrimental effects of position city Harlins in third person regarding acquisition of real estate. Item B, pursuant to chapter five fifty one, sections five fifty one point oh eight seven, point oh eight seven one, and point oh seven two, the government code regarding commercial, financial, informational, business prospect in which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives on a project known as Project Dream, and then also D, United Launch Alliance, and also E, Project Liberty Two, and then C, pursuant to section five fifty one point oh eight seven one, Texas Government Code, consult the city attorney connection to the NPL merger, and then F, that would be Project ITD twenty eighteen. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, there, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to meet with our attorneys in the executive session, there, there could be action on some of these items when we return. Thank you.
I see my, I see my action today with my sister and her family and my son, who's working up there.
We are out of executive session at seven oh nine, and we're now going to go to. We are out of executive session at seven oh nine, and we're now going to go to item fourteen, which is consideration and possible action to approve item thirteen A, as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to approve, as discussed in executive session, item thirteen A?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We're going to pass item fifteen with no action. Item sixteen is consideration of possible action to approve a real estate contract with Cardone Industries, Inc., and SDC Texas LLC conveying title to approximately sixty-five acres back to the Development Corporation of Harlingen to approve the release of the performance agreement with Cardone Industries and SDC Texas LLC, and authorizing the CEO, manager, and or president to execute these agreements and effect the closing. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And item seventeen, is there consideration, possible action to approve the HGDC entering into a performance agreement with Industrial Tool and Die Company Inc., as discussed in executive session? Is there a motion to approve the performance agreement?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eighteen, citizen communication. There is no citizens communication, so, gentlemen, we are, we are adjourned, and Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.